Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everybody for showing. We got, this is a great turnout this evening. I move that we approve the agenda and consent agenda and the revisions as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Three out one. Anybody from the audience? Three two. Paul Smiller-McPherson.
Okay, staffs update. Site work been going strong this spring. curb and gutter, the past three weeks has been underway for the remaining parking lots, roads. Didn't get too much rain really, dried up pretty well. I was out there a little bit ago, so we're gonna keep moving on those. Should be around ninety percent complete. The only, by the end of the week should be about ninety percent complete, the curb and gutter. The only area that we won't be completed where you see all the trailers, looks like it's own city there. There's a parking lot that goes there. Gonna have to get some trailers and conics and start it to move out of the way early May before we get that parking lot in. But everything else should be in good shape by the end of this week and we've got asphalt pavings set up to resume Monday. On parking lots and roads around the site. Courtyard, rough drainage work is completing there. Staked out for retaining walls. And they'll start on retaining walls in the courtyard this week. Followed by sidewalks and landscaping in that area. It's quite a bit of work to do. Retaining walls gotta go first though. Football field, stadium bleachers are complete. Finishing up some odds and ends on fence and handrail bleachers. Turf installation is starting this week. Six weeks to complete the turf, so it's scheduled to be complete late May. That'll be followed by track completion in early June. Topsoil installation, seeding and landscaping is all started out at the athletic buildings. Moving along with that. As far as the building goes, working on punchless work in areas D and F, which are the academic and administrative wings. Resource center and the commons area. Painting continues. We're installing light fixtures and there's some specialty wood ceilings that are going there that started. Punchless for that area is scheduled for late May. Gymnasium, gymnasium flooring installation of both the main and auxiliary gyms was completed today. Which means gym floor is down. The actual sanding and finishing is starting this week and gym floor shouldn't be striped by the end of this month. Bleacher installation, the bleachers are fabricated. They're being stored right now until we're ready for them. And those should begin install in early May. We've completed the acoustical wall panels in the gym. Need to complete final painting, so we're looking at an early June punchless gymnasium area. Locker rooms, pool area, ceilings, final painting and flooring gets started in those areas. Lockers are ready to go. Bullet petitions are coming. Boiler accessories, all the finished items. Punchless for locker rooms, pool areas scheduled for mid to late May. Kitchen area, flooring's complete. The rest of the flooring's complete. Kitchen equipment starting this week. Punchless for the kitchen is scheduled for early May. Music, may in the vocal areas. Ceilings, flooring, acoustical treatments are scheduled to begin later this month. Punchless for those areas is in early June. And then the auditorium, which is the last, will be the last area to complete. Nearing completion on MEP, we're up in. Start drywall work in there. And we're ordering all the specialty wall treatments, ceiling treatments this week. Planning on wrapping that up and punching that in early July. The other thing we're gearing up for is testing of life safety systems. Which is, you know, fire sprinkler, fire alarm system. Those are the hot tubs with the city for occupancy. We're gonna start testing those systems in early June. Also talking to the city about starting preliminary walkthroughs in early June as we work towards a comfortable occupancy for retirement. Any questions?
Still on schedule and under budget?
Yes, sir.
As we like to hear.
This is a photo out of the home side of the football stadium. You can see the home concession stand in the background. Landscaping getting started, trees and shrubs. Sidewalks are complete in this, around the football stadium. Another photo of the bleachers on the home side. Sidewalks are complete. Finishing up handrails and fence installation. And here's another photo, I think a lot of you asked what was going in these areas, so I, this is what, this is what these areas will look like. Obviously the plants will get much bigger, but I'm working on landscaping and mulching in these beds. This is a view of the tennis courts. The posters set. Should start tennis court coating later this month.
Pat? I may, that's a view of only half of the tennis courts.
That's true.
We have tennis courts here, we have tennis courts up here as well. And fencing around. I may, up here at the top of the photo is the, what are they called? Tailgate row. We'll sit right up there and you'll look down on the football. I give my little bit of a comment.
We've got a lot of seeding going on right now and finishing up. Some of the areas didn't germinate this fall, getting those reseeded. You can see the irrigation pond on the far left that's filling up quickly. This is a view inside of an area of the administrative offices. And this is a view on the second story of the administrative down the corridor. This is the auditorium. Rizers are complete. Lot of stud framing that had to happen in there. At the very top of the photo, you can see the catwalk. Getting roughened and completed in there. This is the commons area. Looking, the window you can see in the background is in the large group instruction area. Working on floor polishing in there and getting ready to start ceilings. Another view of the commons area from up above, looking down, looking out into the courtyard. And this is yet another view of the commons area, again that same window in the large group instruction.
So on your right is the entrance to the auditorium there. And if you look back on the left there, you see some red. That is the media center there for the resource center.
Yeah, and the walls, you see the wood strips on the far right, on the studs, yeah. Those, those get the specialty wood wall panels. This is on the other side of the large group instruction in the media center. Ceiling grid going in, painting walls.
Does everybody remember what the larger group instruction room was for? I mean, it's kind of that idea of you've got a larger meeting space, you can sit about a hundred people, so is it SAT testing? That way you're not in a classroom, you got a better space. Is it a KAT banquet? Is it a signing for a scholarship? We've got a nicer place so we can have a little bit larger group activity and that's what that is. It's kind of in the heart of the school.
Just a view of locker rooms, getting ready for flooring and hung fixture installation. Walls are painted. Another view of, I believe that's a coaches room. This is an FRP door which lead from the pool into these locker rooms. Aluminum frame and FRP door are resistant to corrosion caused by pool chemicals. They still look pretty nice. This is a view of the kitchen. This is actually where a lot of the kitchen equipment will go. In this area, you could call it the scramble. So this is, I believe, where kids will go get their lunch.
The scramble cafeteria is a little bit different. Everybody comes in one door and then they can actually move around, much like a cafeteria at a hospital or a college. And then the only way out is there's three doors on the other side and they have to pick a line to go through. So that when they get in, everybody don't have to just wait in one single line. They can pick whichever line they want to go to and then pay when they have the items that they like. So it's why it's called a scramble. Everybody's kind of moving around.
This photo in the, one of the vocal rooms, van rooms, finishing hanging sheet rocks. Getting started taping and finishing the block and precast walls are painted, so once we get the drywall done, we'll start ceilings in there. View of gymnasium. This is the main gym. Floor, closest couple, this is Friday, I believe, this photo. This is a view of the auxiliary gym. Floor complete and ready for sanding. And this is taken today. This is all the gym floors down.
And everybody remembers the big red stoppet up there. Holds the scaffold door, a sixty foot wide door that opens up between the two gyms. And it actually is installed up there. You can't even see it. The bottom of it's red, so it blends right in when it's up. And that's where we have our big graphic that'll kind of be our school pride with athletics. I believe it says "Home of the Lions" on that. So that'll be the big focal point when you walk into the gymnasium.
That's it.
Looking good.
Good, thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Just a few more updates on high school. Abby has started to receive furniture bids and furniture bids have come in. We've actually started to get calls of starting, people ready to start deliver furniture. So we are far enough along, we're starting that. We've been in talks with Dan too about starting to install some of the technology. So really some, a lot of the finishing pieces are starting to come together. So sometime in the next month or two, we'll have projectors going up. We'll have tables and chairs and things like that starting to get delivered. The academic wing, that D, E and F that Pat was talking about, a lot of that stuff will come first and then we'll have another shipment that gets kind of the other areas of the school. We're trying to break it down since it is quite a bit of furniture. And those are two of the big things that are going on there. Academic wings look really good. It's really exciting walking through now and you can really start to see classrooms and spaces. It's really starting to get clean, so you can actually really see what's going on, so it's pretty exciting. Shifting gears though, the middle school. We put those documents out to bid earlier in the month. We will actually be taking bids on the 23rd, so opening up and see which our low bidders are. So really excited about that. Think we've got some great options, working with Pat. The last time we did our budget, we were definitely in budget to do. A lot of things we talked about, which is new HVAC systems, a lot of finishes in classrooms, projectors. And doing some configuration along with the new media center, like we've talked about, science rooms. And even some of those finishes extend out into the woodshop areas and the technology building classroom. And that also includes the canopy that connects the two. So everything that we've talked about wanting with that middle school so far is in. So fingers crossed that we have great bids, but I think we're gonna be there. We've got some good options if we need to cut a little bit, so. I think that's where we're at on the middle school. So excited for that project. Any other questions?
Thanks, Meg. Three out three, special education.
This is part of our retreat series and this evening you should get to hear from Mary Alice Schreger and then she has some others and I'll let her introduce her other guests.
I'm not gonna do very much talking this evening. I'm going to introduce some of my colleagues and they're going to share some information with you. I'm just really excited about that high school. Isn't that, that's really fabulous, really wonderful. Haven't been able to get out there yet. So I'd like to bring up some folks from the special education team. We have a hundred and fifty individuals who are on our special education team in the Lansing School District. Dr. Malcolm, Assistant Director of Special Education, Dr. Vance Sice, Coordinator of Special Education. And then we have some teachers from the high school, Jamie Pollard and Sharon Bates. And then we also have Connie Royal. She is our Transitions Coordinator. She's joined us this evening. Come on up, ladies. And then from our LINKS program, we also have Linda Tocoby and Kelly Denny. And Chuck Holland is back in the back. He's one of our, he's a job coach. He's one of our para educators. So I'm going to turn this over now to Dr. Malcolm.
Did you say you were really excited about the high school building?
Yes.
And you said you weren't gonna talk much tonight? So we're all really excited about that. Good evening, you guys. Dr. Malcolm, the Assistant Director for Special Education. My wife and I are both employed here, so we really love it here in Lansing. She works predominantly with children with autism and the Down Syndrome. I work predominantly for Mary Alice. Mary Alice is a very sensitive person, as you know. She told me tonight to make sure that with my one good eye, that I focused on the Board of Education and not let it wander. The guy in the back of the room, as I came in, asked me if I got slapped by my wife today. And I said, no, that was yesterday. Who's handling the slides for me tonight? Say, you're working for me tonight!
Just give me a look.
Randall! In your five years, yeah, I've worked for you. That's the only way around. Okay, so let's take a look at what we're dealing with with special education. Hit the slide, Randall. This is our first year of our dissolution and there hasn't been a dissolution in the state of Kansas since the early nineties. We do have some host programs in the building just across from us. You'll hear Dr. Vance Sice tonight talking about the School of New Beginnings, which is a day treatment program that handles children with emotional disturbances, some severe autism. There's about thirty-five, forty-five students over there. They come from Fort Leavenworth, Leavenworth, Lansing, of course, Baser, Lynnwood and Tonga Noxie. There's some ladies here tonight who are LINKS teachers who are learning in natural community settings.
Independent.
Okay, that too, independents. So they come from all over as well. There's about twenty, twenty-five students over here. They're young adults between eighteen to twenty-one and they all have intellectual disabilities. And they're right here in this building, so it's a fabulous program. Go Randall. So on December first, we have our count every year and this past Christmas, we had thirty-eight students in our early childhood program who were ages three through five with disabilities. From kindergarten through age twenty-one, we had three hundred and eighty-six kids. And people are always surprised at how many children there are in this tiny community with disabilities. And I think we attract a lot of families because it's a very safe community. And I think we attract them because of our academic standard. We expect the same thing from children with disabilities as we do children without disabilities. Our gifted population is running about a hundred and nine students, so we're approximately five hundred and thirty-three students right now. There we go. Now gifted isn't considered a disability in the state of Kansas. It's considered an exceptionality. And in April of two thousand and fourteen, we had a hundred and twenty-nine kids that were identified as gifted and talented. Nineteen of them are dual identified, meaning they qualify as gifted and talented, but they have a disability. Some of them have speech impediments, they're deaf, they're blind, autism. So that poses a whole different problem for those youngsters. We projected however, that we would have about a hundred and thirty-one students who were gifted after the dissolution. And as you can see, our current population is a hundred and forty-four. It's phenomenal, the amount of children that are being identified. Fourteen of them currently are dual identified. They have a disability. And there's many that are on what we call DEC right now for eligibility and testing, so the number will probably go up. I think right now we're running head to head with Blue Valley. So that's incredible. It's incredible. A little slow there, Randall. Okay, certified staff, we, he's gonna slap me in my good eye tomorrow. I'll be in the blind program. We have fifty-three teachers here and we have related service personnel. We have adaptive and functional teachers, speech language therapists, occupational and physical therapists, three school sites, a one adaptive physical education teacher, a teacher of the deaf and hard of hearing, a teacher of the blind and legally blind, an autism consultant, a transition coordinator who'll be speaking tonight, and then our early childhood. We have three administrators. Oh, you wanna talk about the administrators? You flipped on that a little quick, didn't you? There's Mary Alice, the director, myself, and then Dr. Vance Sice, who runs the School of New Beginnings and the LINKS program. We have ninety-five para educators in this district and we couldn't live without them. On a daily basis, these men and women help these students with their academics and classrooms. Some of them are in our autism programs or our behavior or intellectually delayed programs. Job coaches for kids who are eighteen to twenty-one, going to different job sites, the CLER program out at Johnson County Community College. You know, it's funny when you start looking at this. We have anything from men and women with doctoral degrees and master's degrees coming in as paras who are helping our students with their math and English, right down to those who are changing diapers, feeding tubes, administering medication, making sure kids with cancer are safe during the day. I mean, it's phenomenal when you see what these ninety-five men and women do. The support staff is administrative assistant over with Mary Alice and there's an information management registrar that handles all of our IEPs and our transcripts progress. Now, sometimes people will come to us and say, what qualifies as being disabled? And I say, it's usually that placard in your car at Walmart or Price Chopper that gets you that real nice parking spot up front, even though you don't need it. Here in Lansing however, it's specifically designed in instruction, at no cost to our parents, to meet the unique needs of a child with a disability. So here in town, this is a list of all the children that you may or may not see because many of our kids function on a daily basis and unless we stopped you and told you what their disability was, you wouldn't know. We have many, many students here with autism, deaf, blindness, developmentally delayed children, those with emotional disturbances, our deaf population, several classrooms of intellectually delayed children, severely multi handicapped, our orthopedically impaired students with leg braces, wheelchairs, kids with other health impairments, specific learning disabilities, speech and language impediments, traumatic brain injury, and those that are blind and legally blind. Now, how do we service these students? The vast majority of the youngsters in Lansing, and it's something this town should be very proud of, are sitting in regular classrooms with their peers like everybody else. They're included. There's a smaller group that needs some resource room assistance with their math and reading. We have what's called SBS services, social behavioral skills. Sometimes kids need a quiet time to kind of settle down, get themselves back together. Some of our kids are in partial placements during the day. They might be in a regular classroom in the morning and getting specialized services in the afternoon. Dr. Vance Sice runs the day treatment program and our goal there is to get those children back to their home schools. We have children that are too sick to come to school and some of them are out all year. Some of them are out while they're having medical treatment when they come back. Attendant services is throughout the whole school district. And then we have some homeschool children with disabilities that parents choose to keep them at home for whatever reason or it's a religious issue. Some of our specialized programs, just so that you know, the autism programs, we have classrooms at the elementary and high school. At the middle school, again, SBS classroom. And in the building next door, we have what's called a secondary severe autism, where the kids are coming in to us at various ages, sixteen, seventeen years old, can't speak, can't communicate, very violent behaviors. And in a very short period of time, we provided communication skills for them, all of whom sign, they all use sign language. And once they were able to express themselves, their behaviors subsided. It's interesting. The behavior kids with the emotional difficulties is a classroom at the elementary school, again, the SBS room at the middle school. And New Beginnings deals with that issue all day long. Our intellectually delayed classrooms, that were formerly referred to as mental retardation, now we call them intellectually delayed. We have them at all three of our schools. At the middle school, it's a cross categorical, meaning there might be some autistic children in there, but they're also intellectually delayed, so they're kind of dual diagnosed. We have interpreters in sign language individuals running around the district for the first time this year. And we're seeing big jumps with our kids with hearing losses. And that's everywhere from early childhood through all of the programs, including the kids who attend the school for the deaf when we provide busing and support monitoring in case there be an accident on there or something, going back and forth so people can communicate. Child find, our babies that come to us from birth to age five. We know that all the research says that the quicker we get those babies with disabilities, the more successful they're going to be. So we have teams that set up free screenings here at the education administrative building next door. They run about four to seven students monthly. They run them through everything from speech, language, audological services, psych services, OTPT, to get them in as quickly as we can. Now, our early childhood program is kind of booming. We have a four-day classroom that's a half a day. We have three-day classrooms that are half a day. We have two two-day classrooms that are half a day. And we have diagnostic classrooms for children needing more in-depth evaluation. Highlights of this past year, of course, the programming for severe autism. If you've never seen it, I wish we had videotaped all those youngsters when they first came in and were given to us because nobody would believe that these children could not be educated elsewhere. And then they came to Lansing, Kansas, and they're talking to us. They're not hitting us. It's very nice. I have one good eye. The gifted education parent meetings have been very successful this year. The support for our parents with students with autism in the evening. You'll hear some of our teachers talk about some of the autism awareness activities that are going on and that they've involved regular ed students at the high school with. It's been very successful. Of course, we've expanded early childhood to meet the needs of the babies coming in. The middle school has a cross categorical room that has just expanded like crazy to assist those parents. And then there's been a grant for a scholarship for BCBA students. That's board certified behavior analysts. And those are great people to have because if you had to pay for that service outside the public school, it's thousands and thousands of dollars. So having teachers that can do that on a daily basis really saves. And I'm done talking, so I'm gonna pass it on to Jamie, Special Olympics.
This past weekend, we had our, I've been here for eight years, the first student participating in Special Olympics and he got first in the all-around with weightlifting. He also participated in the bench and deadlift and squat, so he's trying to get involved in the competitions. We kicked off April for Autism Awareness Month. We started off with Coach Williams. He was great and purchased some shirts for his team along with my students. And a couple of students from the elementary threw out the first ball. That was April first. Followed by that Friday, on Good Friday, we held a bowling, the Bowling for Autism Awareness, where we asked different clubs to participate and raise money. Coach Williams' team again took the trophy home for highest average team there. And then last September, we did participate in the Walk for Autism at Arrowhead Stadium. At the end of the month, we will do the Autism Society Walk at the Heartland. It's supported case in the park. If anybody's interested, join in the team.
Hi. Just basic information about transition in Kansas. We have a transition plan for every student that's on an IEP from age fourteen and on. And primarily, we're developing three goals based on a student assessment. Post-school outcomes in education, employment and independent living. And the I-13 and I-14 refer to the indicators that the state then comes back to us to measure our success. I-13 is, did we fill out the paperwork correctly basically? And I-14 is involving follow-up with our students one year past graduation. And we basically, a few of us called those twenty-si- And we basically, a few of us called those twenty-nine students that have left Lansing in that last year and do a one-on-one interview with them by phone, asking if they have been successful in their goals, meeting their goals that first year out. The next slide shows what we've come up with through support, a grant from TAZM. We're pretty happy with, over the last five years, we've collected this data. The state gives us this information back, and we work with them to develop an action plan. We've been happy about our college entrances. Majority of kids are going to school full-time. We're pretty satisfied with those that have managed to gain full-time employment, maybe after a short-term training program. But we found a gap in meeting needs of kids on IEPs that hadn't fulfilled their plans, their goals. They couldn't sustain a job for more than ninety days in that year if they were out of school or had not been able to remain in college for whatever reason. So taking that data, this team, because part of our folks here are the transition team for Lansing this year, we took the funds and spent some great quality work time developing a transition schools toolbox that we hope will provide teachers with activities next year that special education teachers can emphasize building those readiness skills at the high school level and middle school level on self-determination, learning the soft skills of employment, the career readiness, how to access agencies for supports. A lot of our kids with more severe needs have to access outside agencies once they transition from our eighteen-to-twenty-one-year program. So we've tried to combine all these pieces in an instrument that will help our special education teachers better meet the needs of those kids, and that's what that timeline refers to for next year. I'm going to let Lynx talk about this. This is their baby.
These are pictures of our students on job sites. We have twenty-one students all on job sites in the community and within the school district. Five of those jobs are paid. One has possible paid employment. We're waiting for parent approval and output. So that is a big part of their day here at the LINGS program. And we have a couple of students with high school that are also on job sites.
This year, we took two field trips. In the fall, we went to KCK Community College. We went down to the main campus. We took juniors and seniors, and then we came back up to Leavenworth to tour the KCK place downtown Leavenworth. And then we just took a field trip right after spring break to Johnson County Community College. And on our field trips, we met with the Access House or the Resource Center, where students with disabilities will need to go when they arrive at college in order to get accommodations for college students there. So it opened their eyes to what different programs they have. Some of them are really scared about, "What are we going to do? What am I going to do when I graduate?" So they had the opportunity to visit two local community colleges and hopefully make a choice for the next couple of years where they want to attend.
And then something that we did this year, it was a new opportunity for us. Typically, our juniors in high school take a hot careers day, they call it, at the Technical Education Center at KCK Community College. And they get to shadow two or three occupations or trades that are taught there. This is the first time that the tech center opened it up to eighth graders. And when I talked to the middle school principals, we just weren't sure how many students we had that wanted to attend. We thought, "Maybe one bus." Well, we had a wonderful, wonderful showing. We had a hundred and seventy-two of the eighth graders participate in this career exploration day. They were divided into groups, and they had approximately seven minutes at each station. So, of course, when they got to welding, they barely got everything on and held the torch and the whistle blew and moved to the next station. But, so we've got a few things to refine, but they had a wonderful experience in just a few short hours, just to build awareness of the different trades that are available to them. As we know, that's a growing field, and the tech center has employers actually calling them, asking for workers. So this is an avenue we want to open up to our students as much as we can.
We have announced all the businesses at football games. Mr. Chung has helped us with that, figuring out all the businesses that have supported our special needs students. And next week, we're going to present each business with a sign and a recognition and appreciation for having our students in their businesses. And we hope they stick this in their window so that the public can see that these businesses are supporting our students.
This is a piece we couldn't do without the local businesses in Lansing and Leavenworth that have been outstanding. So hopefully, we'll see those outcomes increase and get better results in the next quarters. That's it for our part.
You want the video on?
Yes.
Okay. Give me a second.
Morning, Lisa. How's your morning been? Good. Got me on the clock. What you see, great. Safe for the sun. Good. I hope you have a great day.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
I'm okay. Just trying to get used to it.
Well, good. How's your morning so far?
It's good. I had my coffee.
Got a good mood today?
Yeah.
Great. You ready to be a good student?
I have to be.
Awesome.
We have what?
My president. Okay, so the U-Tech form, government, we plus, we call them in Terry. We want to call them in Terry. Government, they have, we have them.
Their technology, this.
Black, gray, green, and red.
Keep bringing us this part of the nation down.
High school is a house program.
So is she in charge of the loss of her area? So she's in charge of what people do out there, right? So does she have the right to ask you to go to more say or record at video instructions? We would all like to see. Any questions about maybe, I know that was just a quick preview. We had the students make it and thought it would be, you know, they could be a part of it and bring it, you know, show it to you, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's kind of hidden, behind the scenes things that occur in the district that not too many people are aware of. Three out of four at the Alumni Association.
I think as a member of the community, when I watch what the special education program does for our children, now we can understand why more and more people come to Lansing. So congratulations, you guys, great, great presentation. We, the alumni, and it's not just the Alumni Association Board, it is Alumni of Lansing High School. We would like to present some of our views on the high school composites. We're not as organized as the special education program, so what I did was I took down names of some of our alumni who have shown up that would like to address the board. And then I'll take my turn at the end. I was one that had, that had asked Dr. Bagby before a little bit of time, so we're going to start with Mr. Jackie Mills.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of Board Education. My name is Jackie Mills, class of nineteen fifty-nine. I have in my hands petitions signed by the people of Lansing, better taxpayers to this school district, alumni, and if you search through these papers, you might find some seniors in this year's graduating class. These petitions are the people asking for something to be done with our pictures to be hung on the walls of the Lansing High School new projects. I have seen other schools that have hung theirs on the walls also, and the wishes are that they will be hung on the walls. Thank you.
I didn't think this microphone was working because I couldn't hear anybody. I was out there. Others mentioned that too. We can't hear any of you either. So I almost did my mouth. Jackie didn't mention, but there are six hundred and twenty signatures on those petitions. I'm Sherry Alfred, nineteen fifty-seven graduate of Lansing High School, and my children were fifth generation to attend these schools, and all of us attended in my family. I'm the scholarship chairperson at the Lansing High School Alumni Association, and I'm here to support hanging the class composites in the common area of the new school. We met with Dr. Bagby, and he's told us that the original composites will be repaired and preserved. He's interested in doing that, which we're very thankful for, but that a decision hasn't been made on how to display these composites, and that a committee is going to be selected to research this and make a recommendation. He agreed to abide by that committee's recommendation, subject to the board's approval. Now, many of us have volunteered to be on that committee, and we're waiting to see who will be selected. And so to any of these future committee members, we want you to consider the following. That for any display, these pictures will have to be digitized to fix them. We all know that has to be done. Once that is done, they can be printed on acid-free paper, reframed and hung. This is much cheaper than a kiosk, or flimsy flip charts, or panels that can only be viewed by one person at a time. And if they become sun damaged, a new copy can just be printed off. Those who move away from Lansing, they return and they drive down the street and everything's different. There are three churches on K Street are gone, the downtown area is torn down, the museum's too small to hold these pictures or any trophies. But they can visit the high school. It may be a different building, but the same familiar faces are in a gallery where they can reminisce, and it evokes memories of the great athletes that we're so proud of. And they can honor those who have passed away, to include three of our boys who were killed in World War II. They are at home. It may be a new building, but they feel at home. Tradition and history are the very guts and life of a great educational institution. For a hundred and one years, our class pictures have surrounded students and visitors in the halls of our high schools. We owe respect to those who've gone before us by keeping their pictures on the walls. A new state-of-the-art building, a beautiful building, but without any history in it, is merely sterile cement walls without a heart and soul. If whiteboards can be hung and murals can be painted on the walls, there is room for our history. As taxpayers, we should have a voice in this. And remember, the people in those pictures paid for every school in this district. Thank you.
I'm a graduate of Lansing High School. And, thank you. Mine's a little lighter here. I asked all of you, how many of you recall singing your song, the Ballad of Our Song? Remember that caught in your throat, tear in your eye? It was an emotional, great, frightful experience. So it is to our former classmates and classes who've gone before. Relatives also of these classmates are very, very proud, and the pictures, which are now in the current high school, would be lost if we don't move them over to the other side. Taking the framed pictures will fill the gap between past, present, and future, so that all people who go into the school, be they students or visitors, can enjoy them. Lansing is an exceptional learning institution. Let's continue to be that. Let us show our glory. Thank you.
You'll have to excuse me, I don't have anything written down except a few notes here. My name is Sharon Henley. I graduated nineteen seventy-one. It has always been a tradition for us to have the pictures in the city, or in the schools. These have seemed like a tradition to us. It's actually a part of our history too, to know my father, Jan Czech, what did he get here? Jing Young graduated from there. Marion and Jack Stewart was our first mayor. Those three were in the history of incorporating Lansing. And there are many more. And Michelle Smutter, too, also graduated. And I can't tell you how many cousins and people that I've had graduate here. And I even went as far as talking to my granddaughter and her kids, or not her kids, her kids at school. She's a freshman at KU. And she said that was one thing she always liked to do, was go in, look up at the pictures, you know? Mine was down for quite a while, I thought, what'd we do? But I think we should be able to find a place to honor those people before us that have done so much for the history of our town. And I know there's a lot more that, like I said, I'm not very prepared. It just kills me that you don't want to, that maybe, it's not that you don't want to leave them, but it's just a part of our history and it's important to us. And since I graduated in seventy-one, my dad graduated. Which one did you graduate with?
Nineteen thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine. And my dad's was, I can't tell you his date right now, but I always look at it, first thing, when I walk in that building, I'll go through, I have my brother and my sister, they have both passed. I look at them, I have a daughter on the wall, and, you know, it is just something we always do, and it's still our heart, and it is part of our history. And I hope that we can find a place for the pictures, and there's a... Just if you really, I think you understand what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Betty Klein-Des, and I think all of you know me. I'm from class of seventy-six, and I just want to reiterate a lot of what they've said is, there is a lot of history there. In my family, there's three generations of pictures on the wall. For some, they've got at least four generations. And I think we need to put it out, get them out there. And for the six hundred and twenty signatures, that was not going door-to-door, going down the street getting signatures. Those were people that, you know, went out of their way to find people that were, had petitions to sign. So it's not, none of you probably had anyone come to your door, knock on, that's not how it was done. And most of those signatures were gathered by those that are not on Alumni Board, but are alumni. So I don't want you to think this was an Alumni Board initiative. It wasn't. We have a lot of people out there that care about these, and I think we need to try and display them.
My name is Robin Spinner. I too am a graduate of Lansing High School. I have a daughter who graduated in twenty thirteen. I have spent the last six years as a volunteer at the Lansing High School, working in the theater department and helping put on productions. So I've gotten to know quite a few of the students who have come and gone in the last six years. And yes, we have a lot of history here, but in talking to the students who are getting ready to be the next generation of history, they look at those pictures on the wall and they think, every day, I'm going to be up there someday. And when I talked to some of the seniors this year, and they were talking about what's going to happen to them, and they were, you know, we didn't have an answer for them. And I can't, there wasn't a single one who didn't look at me and say, I'm not going to be on the wall. What? I have to be on the wall. I've waited four years to be on the wall. So it's not just the people who have come before, it's the generations that are yet to come that have a place in history that's being made right now. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Now, we, we're looking at this with the assumption that the decision has not yet been made, correct? Okay, just want to make sure we were correct in our assumption. I'm June Foley, class of nineteen seventy, and the current president of the Alumni Association. And I just have a few words to sort of follow what the other alums have said. We have been very active in our community over the years. Recently, after the bond issue for the new high school was passed, we, as the Alumni Board, got energized, and we all started talking about the future of the composite pictures because we all like looking at them. So the Alumni Board asked Sherry Alfred, who's one of our board members and also our scholarship committee, to come up with a plan to communicate to the superintendent and the board the future of those composites. So Sherry has visited with Mr. Bag, Dr. Bagby a couple times. She has sent letters to the board. And then recently, several of us from the Alumni Board did go and meet with Dr. Bagby on the future of the composites. And basically, what happened at that meeting with Dr. Bagby explained to us that a committee would be formed. He invited members of the Alumni Association to participate in that, as well as other community people, school people, to form a committee, to look at the composites, to look at the new high school, and then to make a recommendation to the school board, which I've already covered. So we are already energized to participate, and I know there are other people in the community who have called and volunteered to be on the committee. Some of them are here in the audience, and some probably not. So what we're asking is for the composites to be on the walls of our new high school for people to see, and the reasonings, I think, have been expressed by other speakers. Just for the board, if you're not familiar with the Lansing High School Alumni Association, the association started back in the nineteen sixties. Our mission, primary mission, is to gather our alumni, give them an opportunity on an annual basis to get together and reminisce, you know, visit old friends. We have people that come in as far as California, I think was our furthest last year. We have people that can barely walk sometimes, who comes to our association dinners because it is a good time to not only get together with friends, but to also make new friends when they come here. So one of the things we've asked Dr. Bagby, depending on when the school district actually takes over the new high school, is that maybe in conjunction with our dinner this year, we can do a tour of the new high school. Because there's a lot of discussion that's been going on in the community about the new high school, I know it's going to be high tech, and so it'd be great if we could do the tour. One of the other things that we do as part of our Alumni Association is that we give out scholarships. So we raise money from our community, from other alums, from our businesses here in our community. We raise money and we give out scholarships to graduating seniors of Lansing High School. Several years ago, we started with what we call memorial scholarships. Those scholarships are given in the name of an alum who has passed. The money for those scholarships are raised by the family and friends of that alum. So we are very invested in our community as well as with our alums. So approximately ninety scholarships is what we have given out to date, and we hope to be able to continue to do that. And one of the alums also mentioned, one of the things we did several years ago, two thousand and three, I think, was we worked on the dedication of the gymnasium in memory of Earl Johnson. That was one of our projects in the early two thousands. We are active in the community, we all live here. Some of the sculptures are from our alums that have moved away, but are still connected. You know, part of the nice things about technology is that they can stay connected through Facebook, Twitter, and I'm sure there's other, other things that they use to stay connected. So what I'd like to just sort of conclude with, on the behalf of the Alumni Association, is that we would like to see the composites continue to be hung in the walls of our high school. It is a piece of our history, it is something that kids, grandparents, parents, friends, when they go into the high school, it's an automatic process to look up at those walls. I have been at basketball games when people automatically look, and sometimes they can't find their parent because the picture is gone, but they look. It is sort of the part of our institution as Lansing High School. So I know you're going to form a committee, and I'm sure that you will have a lot of volunteers to serve on the committee, but our stance from the Alumni Board, as well as the other alums who have, who have attended this meeting, and those signatures, is that we would like to see the composites continue to be displayed. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to say, you know, great job, and thank you very much for that. We, you know, I know that Claudia and I are both, from a board's perspective, are looking to, you know, forward to being on that committee, and I think we all have the same end goal in mind. What that final product looks like, I don't know. That's what kind of the committee's going to come up with. There's never been an intention to not have pictures up in some form or fashion, so, you know, not, what that means, you know, we'll figure that out. But I think we're all, you know, rowing on the same team, going in the same direction. So I've heard rumors at times that, hey, yeah, we're just going to put them in boxes and in storage and go, like, no, that's absolutely never been an option, in my opinion. So I know that there's some pieces that need to be looked at from a preservation standpoint first, and we want to make sure that happens. So we've got some support, you know, definitely from our end, to try to, you know, quash any rumors out there that, hey, yeah, we're just going to discard them, absolutely not. That is part of the history, and for some of the reasons that were said, you know, eloquently there by the presenters. So just wanted to let you know that that is, you know, it is on our radar, and we do know about it, and we're looking to proceed. Hopefully that alleviates a little bit of stress, but we'll, I know Claudia and I at least will, and some of the other members will get, make that happen.
Can I ask you one question? Can I ask a question?
Sure.
My name is Charlie McCollum. I graduated fifteen eighty, and I keep hearing about this kiosk, and this thing has been talked about for two years. And I understand that people have been, or organizations have been contacted concerning this, and about money to fund this. Is this correct? This is not correct at all?
I thought we got an email that said funds had been raised.
I understand that people have been, that they have been, people have been contacted concerning the kiosks, as far as what it would cost to do this, and how it would be funded. Has that been done?
I don't. I don't recall seeing anything in that.
Okay, because I mean, it's been, it's been coming up for two years. The last Alumni Association, it was brought up, I'm not going to say who it was that brought it up or whatever, but I keep hearing this, and I've heard it from pretty good sources that people have been contacted about money for this.
I know people have talked about it, and I've heard people talk about it. Yeah, not officially, but, you know, in small talk and that, that I know of, nobody has talked about how to fund.
No feelers have gone out to any organizations or anything like that?
You know, in small talk, they might have, but I, you know, I can't guarantee that people haven't talked about it. But I, I've heard people talk about it, but officially, there has been no fundraising, no talk about budget.
I understand that, but there has been feelers put out, I guess, right?
I suppose some people have. I've asked, I mean, I'm not an expert on it.
I don't say you are.
And so I don't know, you know, I'll have to ask people, what is that? You know, that kind of thing? That's the kind of talk I've heard. What is it? How do they work? What are, what have others seen? That kind of thing.
Well, I'm, like I say, I'm just asking because I keep hearing this, and I keep hearing it from pretty good sources that it's been done, so whether or not it's not, I don't know. I'm just asking, asking.
No official allocation of funds whatsoever toward that.
And no fundraising either?
No fundraising.
No fundraising, no fundraising at all? And what about the committee? When is this going to be formed?
Well, we're gathering names. Is it okay?
Yeah, no.
We're gathering names right now, and so far, everyone that's asked to be on the committee, I plan on including them in the committee. It's going to be some while. We have some big tasks ahead of us. We need to move an existing high school into a new high school. This summer's going to be quite booked with some really, you know, big challenges and so forth. But I'm guessing that we'll be able to get the alumni tour for their banquet, their annual banquet. I'm pretty safe in saying we'll be able to do that for June and those folks that have mentioned that. Around that time, hopefully, we can start having talks about, because people really need to go and see this. They need to look at the walls, and hopefully, we can come up with a pretty good consensus among the people that are on the committee about where to place those things, what they should look like. There's some other details that need to be worked out in terms of, Mr. Martin, you know, mentioned preserving these. We brought four of them over here, one of them started falling apart when we brought it over here. Another one, the sun damages made it where you can't read it. And the older pictures actually do better with sunlight than the new ones. So we have some work ahead of us. Hopefully, we can put a lot of options in front of this committee and let the committee talk and discuss preservation techniques, what would be the best method. How are we going to preserve the original ones is a big task. We're going to try to get some museum-type people to help us with that, because you don't, you know, we'll reproduce them, we'll get them in a good display-type format, but we still want to preserve the originals. And the originals are deteriorating every day. And so those are some big tasks that at least initially with June and the others that come in to see me and talk to me, those are the things we discussed about what to do next.
Like, if we're going to spend the money for a kiosk, and we've got some money, there must be, that's going, we're not going to be that cheap, so why can't we put the money into the pictures?
We haven't allocated any money toward a kiosk.
What I'm saying is, one way or the other, either, some way if you're going to preserve it, you've got to spend some money, okay? One way or the other.
Well, I'm talking about preserving the originals.
I understand what you're saying.
Not electronically, that word, preserving them.
But you're still going to spend some money, and it could cost quite a bit, so why not put it into redoing the pictures? If we have to redo the frames, let's do it.
So you choose who you want on this committee? They're your choice of people, you choose?
As I just mentioned, everyone that's asked to be on the committee, our plan is to be.
So you have fifty that want to be on the committee, fifty can be on the committee?
Sure. You know, the thing is, eventually, you're going to have to come up with a consensus, and you may want to appoint seven to twelve people to make those decisions for you and so forth. But no, I, I don't plan on controlling any aspect of the committee or where they're placed. That's not something that's within my job description. I'd rather put you in charge of that than let you and the board come up with those final decisions.
Is there a timeline for the decision and the action plan on what's going to happen with these? I mean, is there certain landmark timeline decisions that, when you want decisions to be made? Do you have an idea?
We haven't established a timeline on this.
Isn't a project planned with that yet?
I have one other question. I talked to Mr. Martin concerning, you know, while I'm further committed, and during his conversation, I asked him about, you know, is this going to be a hand-fed committee? And he said, no. But he did say that he was going to be on it, and Mrs. Logan was going to be on it. Now I understand Mr. Hutter's, Haller's going to be on it. And he also mentioned that there'd be some teachers on it. And you know what I said to you when you said that? I said, well, isn't that putting the teachers in a very bad position? Because they are employed by the school district. And if they don't, if they don't go with the school district, it's like saying, well, okay, do you want to work here, or do not?
No, I absolutely disagree with that. We have, we have obtained the teachers' recommendations all along throughout the new building process.
I'm just saying, isn't that putting you in a bad position? Would you like to be put in that position if you were a teacher? That you're going to make the rulings for people that they have nothing to do with? They're teachers, that's what they are, that's what they should be.
That's what they should be. They shouldn't be involved in this politics. That's not their job.
I could hear.
And why would you want to put them where people is going to go after them because they don't agree with what they say?
I don't, I don't think it's an adversarial thing, though, Charlie. Right now, we're all working together trying to come up with something that's common, that everyone would like to see happen. Right now, it's not adversarial at all, that I can tell.
Charlie, one thing we have to think about is we're focused on preserving this important history, and I'm like everybody else. I always go and look at my boys' pictures up there, and my husband, when he had hair, that was a long time ago.
That was a really long time.
A real long time ago. But, you know, you need some teachers who know the day-to-day patterns with the kids, because first of all, you've got to figure out where you've got the wall space to do it so that we're not exposing the new ones to the same hazards the old ones have. And then, you've got to get some input from teachers. Okay, is, we're thinking about this spot. No, it's probably not a good spot, or that's a terrific spot. But the people are going to live with these pictures every day. Really need to have some input also.
But they're not going to be in their classrooms.
No, they'll be in the hallway, but the kids go back and forth. They're going to have close to 900 kids in those hallways. So, we, there's some practical aspects that the teachers can help with.
I understand that, too. But I, you know, I went to a few lodges this winter, and I was at Piper, and theirs, they still have theirs, they're in their common area. Ponder Knox, they still has theirs, they put theirs up. Limerick High still has theirs, but theirs is in a library, which is kind of hard to get in to see. But they still have the pictures, and they're on a frame, and they're on their shelves.
Yeah.
But they do have, they haven't, you know, discarded. They haven't stuck them in a, whatever, a machine or put them on a wall, a screen or whatever.
Yeah.
You know, I'm just, I hope this thing is fair. I guess that's probably what I'm saying. I don't, I don't want to see it the exact.
I think all of us want to see that it's fair.
Sharon, yeah. Not to be rude, but have any, do any of you have kids or have graduated? I've been gone a long time. You have children?
I have five.
This year will be first.
Five kids, he's got one that's graduated.
He's probably lived here a little bit longer. I'm sure I would have graduated maybe, although I'm helping teachers.
It's just, yeah, it's just.
Are you from here?
No.
Did you go to school here?
No.
Does any of you go to school here?
Does it matter?
Well, they're parents. We've got, Dr. Whitlow, how many kids have you got?
I have five of my children graduated.
Depends on how you count.
Yeah, well, count them all.
I have four graduated, and I have six still in the district. But no, I didn't graduate here.
But it's children, dude.
But you know what? I think a big misconception, this topic has never come before the board to make a decision yet. We're still gathering information. We want everybody's opinion. The passion that you guys expressed was phenomenal tonight.
Yes.
But the one thing I want to say when I run for governor next year, I want you on my side. You guys had more on your, your petitions than people came out to vote for school board members.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's incredible. And this is a little sliver of a topic that is an enormous, passionate piece of history. So, I commend you all, but we haven't even discussed it yet.
Yeah.
It's never come to our committee for a vote, for, to our board for a vote.
I think.
So, I don't assume, and I'm not saying this in a bad way, but don't assume that we're against you.
Yeah.
We've all been to high school. We've been back to our high school. We have seen our pictures on our walls of our high school. We know what you guys feel like.
Thank you. That's, yeah.
Thank you. It's nice to hear something positive.
But I was called personally and told there was no room for these pictures from.
Because of all the murals you're wanting to put up or paint, once you put the murals up, there's not going to be no room for the pictures.
You may not have room here, but other people.
You know, I feel like when you open the school up, our pictures should be there.
Like, Dr. Whitlow said, you know, nothing has come before us, and we have a committee to discuss this. You know, is there a timeline with that committee? We're working on the boundaries and parameters of what that means.
So, will you be put on the agenda once a month, once a week, twice a year, six, I mean, how often do you want to hear from us?
I.
How often is it going to take?
Well, no, I think once.
Once?
Yes.
We heard you.
We heard you. Absolutely. I, there's, and we're all pointed in the same direction. We're not adversarial. We both want the same thing. I, I don't think that, I don't think that's coming across.
Who makes the final decision? Is it Dr. Beckby?
It's the school board.
No, we do.
We do.
The board?
Yes.
Okay.
And you'll have to come back and make your recommendations after all of the committee stuff is done, and some, what do you?
We can do that. That's easy.
I think you have another volunteer through the committee.
We'll look, we'll look to put that together, but right now, it's, you know, we don't know what the recommendation is to do anything.
We've got to get the building done so we can see what we've got to work with that's going to be.
Yeah, here was our intent from the Alumni Association, and the board is only 12 people, so we don't represent everybody in the community. We all heard a lot of rumors. There's a lot of rumors. The reason we got energized was because of the rumors, which we discussed with Dr. Beckby. So, our intent, part of our intent, is not only to let you know how we personally feel about it, but we need to increase the communication because it is a passionate issue for us. We need to make sure that, you know, the communication, and Dr. Beckby talked about that also. We need to communicate so that we know when we can have input, and one of the reasons to come before the board now was we wanted to give our input before decisions were made.
That's good.
Thank you.
Can I say one thing?
Can I finish?
Last comment, please.
Well, I just want to go back to the committee. I, I think that, and I believe that you feel the same way, is that we should have people from the community working for the committee for this. You know, it's, it's, you're, it's right. It's not fair for the teachers to make those decisions.
That's a major conflict of interest, isn't it?
Anything. But, you know, I know some people that are wanting on it, and, you know, we're all going to hear rumors, and, but.
Well, hopefully, you all come along, you know, hopefully, you all leave with the same message, that we are on the same page.
Okay.
And kind of what is going to happen next.
I'm not going to, Charlie McCollum, you know, have to.
Nick, you're up.
Charles McCollum. I nominate him.
Anybody else have any questions?
I just have one thing to say. If any, if nothing else, it seems like it brought us all together.
Yes, yes.
I mean, the school, because we need some school spirits, some, I mean, we do. Everybody, it has brought us together, so that's a good thing. We just have to work together.
I want to, yeah, thank, yeah, go ahead, Les Martin.
Just wanted to ask a question. When is the schedule or tentative schedule for movement date on the new high school?
We're, it's not exact, but the day school is out over here, we're going to be working fast.
Right.
You know, because we, we have lots of new stuff there, but we have lots of decisions about, you know, desk and those kinds of things, furniture, equipment and so forth. So, I don't have exact dates about when things will be complete, but I know we're going to start the day after school is out, and, because it's, it's going to be, you know, a big task to get everybody over there.
And school's going to start on time next year of the new school?
That's the plan.
Right.
On time, under budget, that's.
So, is there any way to say 30, 60 days, you know, whatever, before that time period that school starts, that this picture thing can be resolved, settled, or whether or not they're going to replace it with school or not?
It'd be, you know, I'd love to say that, but the safe side of me says I'm not going to make promises. I'll work to, I'll work hard for you, and I'll work hard toward getting everybody involved. The thing about the committee is I don't, I don't think the question is about whether we're going to display them or not. The big question is, how are we going to display them? And that's what we need the committee, you know, over there in person, looking, you know, all of our drawings are kind of helicopter views. You know, you're kind of looking from the top. It's really hard for you folks to get a good idea looking at drawings. Once I get you all together and we go out there during the daylight and look at the walls and look at the design and so forth, then, you know, we'll be able to make some better decisions, I think. You know, during the design phase, when we had several public meetings about this whole issue, this never came up, and I wished it had have.
And I think the reason why is it was always presumed.
Yeah, yeah.
At the time that the pictures would move over there as a tradition of a school district.
Right, and everybody has a different background. My high school doesn't display them. I never even thought of it, and so, I'm glad that it's come up. You know, we'll look at them and so forth, but it would have been nice if we could have designed it two years ago and, and maybe not have, you know, be done with it kind of thing. But that's okay, because we'll get the committee together, we'll go out there, and we'll look at the, the walls and the design, and the committee, you know, not everybody's going to agree. You know, we'll have a good committee, that everybody will be alumni pretty much that's on this committee. They're not all going to agree either. We're already getting comments from other alumni about their ideas and so forth. So, my hope is that we can get everybody together, looking at it, and coming up with a consensus of how to display them and so forth.
I want to thank everyone's passion. Oh, sorry. Last one.
Sorry. Penny Wender, I was class of 85, and my picture's up on the wall, and so I'm just curious, do you have a plan on what you're going to do with the picture during this time? Because I know that once the high school moves out, they're going to immediately start working on and preparing for my middle school. So, but I want to know, do you have a plan for the pictures in that meantime?
Yeah, I have folks right now that have been charged with getting them down and getting them over here, you know, and into a good, safe spot. One of the things that came up in one of our meetings was, we had a lot of vandalism last summer, and many of those pictures could have been gone forever. Some of that vandalism was right there, not 30 feet from those pictures. And so, our plan is to start getting them over here. We're, we've taken some of the worst examples of damage and having people look at it and tell us how we might, you know, repair those and so forth. But that's the plan, is to get them over here and get them safe as soon as possible. You don't want a lot of exposure to them and so forth, you know, fingerprints, all kinds of stuff can go on with it.
Well, Dr. Beckby, do you remember when we were meeting with you, and you said you just wanted them moved once, and you were hoping that whoever's going to restore them would take them? That hasn't come about?
No, we haven't got somebody to help us restore them yet, and.
And no bids have gone out for that or anything?
Not bids, no. We've, we've been inquiring and consulting with a couple of people, and I have some people that are helping us with that.
That would be the ideal thing. Because no matter what happens to them, they do have to act like that. They have to be digitalized.
Yeah. They have, well, they need to, we need to get these repaired.
That's what I mean.
And then, yeah.
That's the way, the computer will do that.
So, I, I'd invite you to look at the one where you can't even read, I mean, I have it back here for you to see. You can't even read the names.
That's what happens when you're old.
Yeah. So, anyway, that's, that's my concern.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Message received.
All right. Thank you. This is something we assumed, I mean, we just assumed, I mean, I, as myself, just assumed you'd be there, because it's always been there, and I think that's what you have of a lot of us, that have lived in Lansing all our lives, and I just want to bring that in there. You need to be there.
All right.
Lansing's strong.
All right. 4.1, application and certificate for payment. Everybody have an opportunity to review that? I move that we approve the pay application and certificate of payment as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Section 5, buildings, ground and equipment. Everybody to get an opportunity to review the reports?
Yep.
Any questions or concerns? Section 6, administrative reports. Everybody have an opportunity to read those? Any questions, concerns? Number 7, 7.1, draft school's calendar. Dr. Beckby, you have any?
It's, as we do every year, I send it out to everyone, solicit feedback, and then Ms. Hutton and I and Danielle, we all get together with a committee, and we discuss it and look at it and so forth, and it's pretty much a template each year. This year's been nice with Leap Year. It gives us an extra day to play with and so forth, so, the good news about this calendar, in my opinion, is that we finish before Memorial Day, pretty much, and they got Easter Monday in, which, we get that request every year, haven't always been able to build it in. And then, the other thing is that we had a great idea to move spring break next to Easter, but that wasn't going to work with our league schools and athletic competitions and those things. I mean, we might be able to fix one week, but when you count their week, too, that's two weeks where our kids would lose out. So, with that, I recommend the calendar.
It seems kind of long, doesn't it?
It always does.
I mean, maybe I'm just getting older.
We're starting earlier and.
It is.
Right off, right there, Dan.
Next year looks even better. Danielle's already started to work on next year's, and next year's even looks better. So, that's the good news.
I move that we approve the 2015-2016 school calendar as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? 7.2, mass dispensing site. Thought that was interesting.
My only question on that, if I could ask a question. You look through there, it said that public health authorities can use our facilities for dispensing or conducting operations with the use of all of our facilities to include
That didn't come up in the discussion too much.
It's in the writing. Are we sure that our system is secure enough that we're not going to violate FORPA?
That's a great question. We'll need to, I'll need to go back and ask them about it.
I, I don't have an issue with them using our computers for public health, okay? Because in that situation, I mean, HIPAA doesn't apply, but FORPA might, and if they access records that violate a confidential agreement, then.
That's right.
We've got a big problem.
Yeah. I'll go back. We'll address that specifically.
So, we can take, you want to table this then to review that?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, I think. I think we should table it and then bring it back.
Okay. Okay. I'm in motion for that. Move that we table 7.2, the memorandum of agreement for mass dispensing site.
Second.
Any discussion? Favor?
Aye.
All opposed? If you just get some clarification on that, we'll go from there. 7.3, Sunflower Foundation Grant.
I always recommend that we take the money.
Always. Always, every time. My move that we accept the $7,500 check from the Sunflower Foundation as presented.
Second. Is Sunflower the, is that a Medicaid insurance plan?
There is a Medicaid insurance plan.
Is Sunflower, is that the insurance plan? Because, I mean, it's got something to do with...
The healthcare for Kansans.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I think they're one and the same.
Okay.
Or maybe a subsidiary.
So is it a total of 15 or, am I reading this right? Is this 7,500 is payment one or two? So it's a total of 15?
I think so. Yeah, that's how I read it.
Yeah.
And by law...
Different increments or timing.
Yeah. So I'll have to bring it back to you again because, you know, by law, any dollar that comes in donated or gets.
Two of two will have another line item. All right. So I made a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 7 dot 4, senior breakfast donation. Everybody get an opportunity to look at that? Move that we accept the $250 donation from the Three Bs, CDS, for the senior breakfast?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? 7 dot 5, the DECA donations. This is nice. Move that we accept the DECA donations from $200 from Citizens National Bank, $100 from Elizabeth, $100 from Adir Place, and $25 from Computer Networks and Support LLC.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. 7 dot 6, track donations. Move that we accept the track donation for, from complete storage for $50 and advanced pest control for $200? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? 15, okay. I move that we...
Oh, did you go to do that?
Oh, 7, 7, yep, sorry. Forgot the amended ones. 7 dot 7, new high school phone system.
We were still waiting for quotes, bids before the board agenda was put out. So those came in and we're recommending for the new phone system at the new high school. The Yellow Dog proposal, $57,173.
I know, I believe I've had, those aren't cheap.
No. This is pretty much the hardware guts of the system.
Now, if I remember, they're already doing the servers and the network wiring?
Yeah.
Is there an advantage to having them do our phone system to integrate all of those phones?
There is. And they'll, they'll be more compatible. They'll talk with each other because the phone system we're using is IP-based. And that way, that's, so you can get your voicemail and your email and...
Same wiring.
Yeah. So, and then nobody really can touch Yellow Dog's prices. So that's, we did have one other consideration. It was $14,000 higher than the higher one. So...
I move that we accept the new high school phone system from Yellow Dog Solutions as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. 7 dot 8, KASB membership renewal.
It's attached to with the additions. And I'll just talk about both of them very quickly. Your membership dues for the Kansas Association of School Boards is $11,263. And then with the Legal Assistance Service Fund, that adds another $1,650. So I recommend both of them. They've been a good organization for the board and provide lots of services.
I move that we approve the, 7 dot 8, I move that we approve the KASB membership renewal for $11,263.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 7 dot 9, I move that we approve the KASB Legal Assistance Fund service fee for $1650 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? I move that we move to executive, executive session to discuss non-elected personnel matters for 20 minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Back in 20.
8 dot 2, I will go through these, resignations and retirements. Move that we accept, I'll just read them off. Bridget Sylvia, Cindy Snodgrass, Sarah Tuppelsing, Jennifer Abbott, Grace Hunter, Colby Seagraves, Jennifer Garrison, Kayla Fearing, Crystal McKnight, Mike Barbo, and Jeremy Krug, and the retirements of Barbara Haig and Jackie Lamar.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? 8 dot 3, move that we appoint Bess Perkins as the Autism Behavioral Consultant, Kelsey Rook as the High School Language Arts, and Kristen Moore, also High School Language Arts.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. 8 dot 4, I move that we approve the supplementals as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. 8 dot 5, I move that we approve the 2015-2016 out-of-district students as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? 8 dot 6, I move that we approve the 2014-2015 substitute teacher list as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? 10, I move that we adjourn.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.